Dear Field, New Hampshire, Denise and Michael Gallant, thirty-two Wyman's Landing, Danville, New Hampshire.
Can we get additional copies of the plans?
I'm gonna read the notice. In accordance with RSA six seventy-six colon four, you are hereby notified that Denise and Michael Gallant of thirty-two Wyman's Landing, Danville, New Hampshire, will make application for a public hearing to consider approval of a major subdivision for property located on two oh six Nottingham Road, Deerfield, New Hampshire, map four sixteen lot twenty-eight, consisting of sixty-six point seven one acres owned by the applicants. The intent of the application is to create through three new lots to the existing lot. Each lot will vary in acreage. The formal application will be submitted to the planning board on the town of Deerfield on Wednesday, February eighth, twenty twenty-three, George B. White Building at seven P. M. The board will consider acceptance and if except accepted, will hold a public hearing at the time. You are invited to attend and offer your comments. If you are unable to do so, the board will accept your comments in writing prior to the airing and read them aloud. The Deerfield Planning Board. Thanks. I do not have any letters in front of me.
Do you want to make a presentation to us of what is being proposed?
Evening, Scott Franco from New Hampshire Land Consultants. With me tonight is Denise and Michael Gallant, as well as their son Gage, who will hopefully be residing on Lot One. As the chair said, the existing lot of record is sixty-six point seven one acres. There is a large wetland complex that we've we had delineated, probably half of it from Damon Burt of Fraggle Rock Environmental. We performed a full boundary survey all the way out to the to the backside of it. There's a town bound that we located way out back. So we completed the full boundary, but only a portion of the topo and wetlands to prove out areas of usable land. The property is accessed by Nottingham Nottingham Road. It's a fifty-foot strip that was left from a subdivision that was done back in nineteen eighty-two, approved by Deerfield and Nottingham. There's an existing driveway that goes out to an existing house that's on the property currently, which will reside on Lot Two if the subdivision is approved. The the house is about a thousand feet from from Nottingham Road, and there is a turnaround at the house, large enough for for five fire truck or ambulance turnaround. It's about thirty by seventy-five a box that I can fit in there. So it's sufficient to get it get emergency vehicles turned around and so what we're proposing is a four-lot subdivision on a private road as allowed per your ordinance. We're showing a fifty-foot right away out to an area that would, if was built, would be a good area for a cul-de-sac with grades that are minor. Out to the cul-de-sacs about eighteen hundred and twenty-five feet, there would, of course, have to be some agreement between the owners, which all the owners are going to be family members. Currently, the the daughter of the Gallants lives in the house. Denise and Michael are going to build on the lot to the right as you come in. They own that one as well. They're going to build there and their son's going to build on Lot One. Lots three and four will remain vacant, and they have no plans to develop those anytime soon. So I'll walk through the lots, starting on the first lot on the left, which is where Gage will build his house. That lot's thirteen point zero one acres with two hundred and one feet of frontage.
That lot twenty-seven.
It's lot Lot One on the plan.
What sheet do you want, Scott?
If you look at sheet six of twelve.
Six and twelve, okay.
So it'll be six of twelve, seven of twelve will show kind of what's up there on the board. So as you come down from Nottingham Road, you're coming down through the fifty-foot strip that was is existing. The first lot will be to the left, which will be Lot One, which will be the lot that Gage builds on if approved. We did design a driveway for that lot to prove that it is able to meet town standard. And that lot will be thirteen point oh one acres with two hundred feet of frontage. And then as you go further down the existing gravel drive where the existing house is, we're calling that Lot Two. Not again is over thirteen acres. Now it has a lot of frontage. We encompassed the whole side of that right away down to the cul-de-sac that has eight hundred and sixty-three feet of frontage. But really, the house is already developed, septic system. Well, everything's already built there. Then you go further out and it's really Lot Three is the remaining land, which is Lot 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 Four is the remaining land at the end of the cul-de-sac. And that's three point oh two acres, and we left two hundred feet of frontage around the cul-de-sac for that. Another Lot Three is to the right as you're coming down across from the house and that whole length of right side of the right away out to the cul-de-sac will be Lot Three, which is five point two three acres with over eleven hundred feet of frontage. In addition to the Gallants owning this sixty-seven acres, the piece up front, they also own a big parcel in Nottingham, which we're doing nothing with on this subdivision, but it will be still connected to the two vacant lots geographically. And as you know, we came in just over a year ago, talked about this subdivision with you guys and and what we should do for a progress for a submit. We looked at updating the road, increasing the road. It was just cost prohibitive. And for what they want to do, build one house at this point, it it didn't seem realistic or financially viable for them to do that. So we're asking for a bunch of waivers. We're asking for six waivers from various things. Simple things as topography on the sixty-seven acres. We did provide thirty-three acres of topography and wetland delineation on the property to prove out the lots. And we're also asking for site-specific soils mapping because there's no use for that for what we're trying to do. And and then we're also asking for a waiver from roadway cross-sections, roadway design, as we are not proposing to design or upgrade other than maintain what's existing out there right now. What's out there right now is a twelve to fifteen-foot wide gravel driveway. There's areas that if we were forced to upgrade, that would impact wetlands, steep slopes of a number of things that that the the road is safe and has been accessing that that house for over, I think it's been thirty years since that house was moved out there. So it's it's viable road for what we're proposing. There are very little traffic. We asked also for a test pit and perk test waiver because these lots are are well over the state subdivision approval requirement. And we're going to have to do test spits for septic designs anyways. We have no no worry about finding locations for septic systems on these large lots. And then the final waiver we asked for was storm water management report as that would just go coincide with doing a road design, which we're we're not proposing. Each lot will be managed your own storm water on site. And so those are the six waivers we asked for. And that's the whole project. It is intended to be a family subdivision. It's not intended to be a large subdivision or or upgrading the the road to a standard road. It's just for a family member to build out back. And then the the Gallants are going to build up front on that other lot, and the daughter already has a house on on Lot Two. So that's the whole project. And open any questions?
Yeah, I think certainly from my standpoint, I'd be opposed to sticking with an existing twelve to fifteen-foot wide gravel gravel driveway. One of the first things I look for is a a centerline profile of the road. And we've got some fairly steep slopes in there going down to the down to the cul-de-sac and I from the standpoint of looking at the fire department getting access in there, I'd be I'd be somewhat concerned with that. Certainly, the another question I end up having is Lot Twenty-nine, which is to the right as you enter the road, enter the property. Would would you would you have some means of prohibiting access to the to the to the road from that lot?
They own all of it, so they can have their driveway come off Deerfield Road or Nottingham Road. So their driveway would come off Nottingham Road, not the not the gravel road that's in place. And just to speak to your first comment, real quick, we don't propose to do anything past the houses, which is where it gets steeper at this time.
You can see, so what you're saying is where it goes, you've got a profile in there for nine percent, that which goes down to the cul-de-sac?
That is for the driveway. We we designed the driveway for Lot One to prove that we could get a driveway up that lot.
So
we didn't provide a profile for the existing gravel road because we don't propose to do any improvements to it.
But if we're you're only talking about building an additional house, but we're approving, we'd be approving four lots.
Right. And which stipulations could be put on that if if those two lots at this point, they be planning on leaving those lots vacant? At the guidance of the board last last fall, we came in with a four-lot subdivision because that's what you can put on a four-lot private road. So that's what we're proposing. They they don't intend to build on those anytime soon. And if they do, we can make it a requirement that they need to do a full-blown road road design.
How do we do that?
Put it as a condition on the plan, which gets recorded and and is managed through the building department.
So we leave it up to a future sub future planning board to enforce that?
Well, that's the only way. I guess you're saying no building permit. Is that what you're saying? Right. And let's addition on there. There would be no building permits pass X. Is that what you're asking for?
Right. The existing, the the only building permit that the Gallants would be asking for in the short term would be for Lot One. Lot Two already has a house on it. Anything past that can be restricted, that no building permit be issued for these two lots until a road design is approved by the Deerfield planning board. And that would be on a plant. We could put that as a note on the plan. That would be recorded at the registry of deeds. And and there's a value in woodlots and and stuff like that, that if they're never built on, they're never built on, but somebody may have interest in a woodlot.
I'd be in the opposition to that. Yeah, but our our standard has been for a lot subdivision. It's like a Smith's Road. It's eighteen feet. Eighteen feet.
May I ask, is there a reason you wouldn't just postpone those additional lots until later and proceed with development that you're anticipating short term?
It would have to, you know, it would have to be at least a two-lot subdivision.
Right.
Or a three-lot subdivision with the the new lot, one, the existing house to get that house on its own lot, and then the remaining land. So it could be down to a three lot that would leave the five acres and the thirty some odd acres together as one lot and eliminate.
And then the the rest would be a big lot in the back?
Right. It would just be the new house lot, the new the lot with the existing house and then remaining land.
When I keep the remaining land with with Lot Two and just be creating one new lot.
As a as a family lot, Mike and I, husband and wife, own that and for our daughter and our son to have an equal part and to purchase that from us as adults that they are, we wanted to have the thirteen lots, the rest to be left in current use. But as Scott mentioned, while we were doing this, we were advised, you know, go with the the number of lots that that could be done on this land, but we again have no intent on doing anything. And I was hopeful that what Scott was proposing is what we could do is put a restriction on there in the recorded deed that, you know, those lots could not get a building permit out back without a road design. I mean, today and for the past, I think it's been forty years, you know, that road has been there for the existing lot. So emergency services, you know, could would go there today to my daughter's house and the one lot that my son would be building on would be before that house.
Which is Lot One?
Correct.
So we would have an extra driveway coming off the twelve-foot driveway that goes up the existing house?
There would be the one driveway for the additional lot.
Right. When I'm looking at going over to Lot One?
Yes.
I guess my concern with that would be if we approve that someday in the future, if you're going to build places out back, the places up front could contest. We don't want to, you know, we don't want to give up any of our property, whether it stays in your family or it doesn't. We don't want to give up any of our property to make that an eighteen-foot wide road. So now you've made it null and void for anybody to build out back because you couldn't bring that road up to a standard for our Smith Road process.
We we could because we're leaving a fifty-foot right away, which is required by the regulations. So you were proposing to to do a fifty-foot right away, just not build the road. So there's room to if ever had to have a have a road, that's your standard for any subdivision is a fifty-foot wide right away. So there's room to to upgrade that road if for any day.
Scott, you'll have a fifty-foot right away, and it's going to be a private road.
Right.
So how does the right away get handled? I mean, like, who's in charge of the right?
They would have to do a maintenance, a road maintenance agreement. That would be recorded.
The homeowners association, basically. Looking looking at these contours you've got going down to the cul-de-sac, I'm what's the what's the grade we've got going down there?
It's steep. I I rode in it with Mike in his in his truck. We made it down and made it out back. It's drivable in a truck. I'd probably say it's fifteen to twenty percent slopes.
Yeah, see, our standard is ten.
Right after the house, and that and that's why we're proposing not to do a row because of the impact.
We're we're we would be approving this with knowing that we got a fifteen to twenty percent grade there that could not meet our standard.
So I guess the alternative is looking at that if we were to lose a lot or or do away with a lot, bring that cul-de-sac right up by the house and and show it right by the house. And then that would eliminate going down that steep slope.
It would certainly be a possibility, yeah.
Which is was an easy change for us to do. It it gives, it's still, the existing house would still, the lot lines would stay the same for lots one and two. Just that right away would be shrunk up to to have the the bowl that up near the house instead of down at the bottom of the hill.
What's the depth of depth of gravel on the driveway?
We didn't do any borings on it. It's been an existing driveway for forty years.
Eighteen, well, the driveway is a driveway. We're talking about a subdivision road. And our our standard is eighteen inches of gravel, six inches of crushed.
We're really, yeah, we're really looking at a common driveway at this point with two lots on it.
Even even with stuff like this, Scott, we've had driveway profiles just for the just a a cross-section so that we have something to go by. I understand that there's an existing driveway there. But like this winter has been, for lack of a better term, hell on gravel roads. It's it's hard to not like at least look for something that we can say, okay, we got a standard that we're following. That that's kind of where we're at. We're kind of rocking a hard place on that. I know there's one house out there and it's been there for forty years, but it's it's kind of hard to not just look for a little bit of
We can definitely prepare, do a we can pull that cul-de-sac back and do a a profile of the existing common driveway, if you like.
Mr. Chairman, I was remiss in not making a motion to accept the application.
Do we have a motion to accept the application?
So moved.
Do you have a second? Bill? Okay. Fred, Bob, okay, Fred made the motion to accept the application. Bob seconded the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it was unanimous. Sorry about that. Yeah, it's it's just in the long run for everybody, it's better if we have something as far as like a profile for the driveway.
Yeah.
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 Making the making the cul-de-sac work up back on on the that's that's pretty tough. The the slope.
Yeah.
I mean, you'd have to, you'd have to you'd have to make that road go to the right, ready after you get to where the wetland start, where it says existing gravel driveway, you'd have to start curving the road around to get it down there.
Yeah, and I think I think we've come to the conclusion that we'll bring that cul-de-sac up, eliminate a lot, bring the cul-de-sac up to near the house.
Okay.
It eliminates so the steep slopes.
So basically, you would bring the cul-de-sac back up to what, four-ten elevation, or the four-ten, four-hundred elevation?
Well, if you look at where the kind of where the driveway is for the house.
Yeah.
I think we can fit it right in there.
So you bring it back so it would be somewhere like where it where it says shed, you'd have your your cul-de-sac there?
Yep. It would be on the lower side, but yeah.
Yeah.
So that would make the the road about a thousand feet long to the end of where they turn into the existing house. It would provide the two hundred feet of frontage for Lot One, two hundred feet of frontage for Lot Two, and then the cul-de-sac would provide the frontage for the remaining land, which that remaining land would turn into thirty-eight acres.
That certainly looks more workable to me.
Yeah, I mean, you could get out back. It just would take a lot of money.
Right.
Which we don't.
No, I I and I understand that. I I I'm not trying to say it's not like you couldn't do something out there. It's just expensive.
I mean, I I could say that, and I've said it before. I mean, our our intent here is all family, and I know you get that. And whatever restrictions we would need to put on those other, you know, that it stays in in current use, which is our intent, but it stays in current use without a major. Because I mean, at this point, I mean, it's cost us to get to this point so far. So, you know, whatever we can do just to have our family, we're just looking for a little family farm land.
Yep.
You know, that's that's the intent of this whole thing.
So if you move the cul-de-sac back up there, obviously granting the waivers for the full, you know, wetland survey and things like that, obviously, you're make it much easier to do because they're not going to be going down there.
Right.
What other waivers were you looking for, Scott?
We asked for, well, up in that area, we did all the wetlands and everything, and if we were to bring that cul-de-sac up to that location, we're covered with topo and wetlands and everything. So it would just be the topo for the remaining land and and wetland when wetland delineation.
They're not building up.
And soil mapping. And then the roadway.
On that anyways.
Yeah, that's what we we did with blended it in with Lightar. And then we had asked for a waiver roadway cross-section. We can do the profile for the for the road or for the the driveway road, private road, or whatever we want to call it. So we could probably eliminate if you think that's going to meet that requirement.
So basically, it's about a twelve-foot wide driveway right now?
It's twelve to fifteen feet wide varying, yeah.
So do you want to build the cul-de-sac?
No. No, we don't.
Well, I'm just asking that question.
And currently at the house, there is about a thirty by seventy-five foot square where and they could pull up further into the driveway as well to turn around a a fire truck.
Walk through? Yeah, probably. Yeah, we we want to do a walkthrough, just like take a walk down the road, take a look at everything. You, I know it won't take you long to put it on paper and get it back. I think, yeah, I I think we definitely want to take a walk and take a look at everything.
Yeah.
What's what's good for you guys?
It really, it's what's good for you, I guess.
It's not Sunday at one.
How's everybody's schedule? Do it on a weekend or a weekday?
Better for me. Yeah, weekend would be better for.
What do we got for weather this week? Saturday? It would be a good day, isn't it?
February twenty-fifth, March fourth.
Saturday looks like a okay day. About too cold, thirty-four. A lot better than last weekend.
Oh, yeah. Well, we got school school meeting.
Oh, you're gonna be there. What time is that?
Nine.
Sunday's warmer if you want to go on a Sunday.
Sunday's all right with me.
You okay with a Sunday?
Sunday's fine with me.
Yeah, you guys okay with Sunday? That would be this coming Sunday, the twelfth? Nine o'clock? Ten o'clock, nine?
Nine, good.
Five o'clock.
Get it done with ten. I'd be, whatever, like ten, okay.
Ten, I like ten.
Ten o'clock.
I'm going with him. I like ten.
Well, ten's fine with me, too. It will be that much warmer. Okay, so why don't we continue this till Sunday at ten o'clock? Because that way everybody can have have the plans with us and you guys there. I'm sure you want to be there, right, Scott?
Yeah, I'll be there.
Pocky and donuts?
I don't, did we want to talk about the waivers tonight or just so we know what we have to reset after Sunday?
Yeah, let me
Certainly with regard to full-blown topography out into an area where we're not going to be putting any roads or anything, I shouldn't be going to waive that. One one minor minor detail, like we're going to be setting stone bounds on the on the edge of the right of way. Let's put a getting a detail of the stone bound. And also make a note that the drill holes shall be half inch, half inch in diameter and a minimum of a half inch deep.
Okay.
Had one other survey who kind of likes dimples rather than
We put good ones in.
Okay.
And and that stone bounds on every point on the right of way, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I can attest that Scott does put the hole in there because I've been able to use it.
Okay.
So right. These are all the waivers. Right?
Yeah, and I can walk through them if we wanted.
Yeah, is that what you put on out? Yeah, is that what you put on, on this, this paperwork here?
Yeah, it's all the, uh, sheet for every waiver I submitted.
Okay. Go to the first one, Scott?
So the first one is for section, uh, three dash three, minor subdivision subsection C point three, A point seventeen jurisdictional wetlands. We're requesting a waiver for delineation of wetlands on area of the larger parcel. Where no building is proposed, a portion of the property was investigated and wetland delineated. I don't know if you want to formally go through the request or, or how you want to.
I think we can.
I'll make a motion to grant that waiver request.
A second?
Second.
Hey, all those in favor of granting the waiver for. Uh, subsection three. Excuse me, subsection C three, point three, A, point seventeen jurisdictional wetlands, all those in favor? It's unanimous?
Waiver number two is section three dash three, subsection C three, B two, topographic survey. We're requesting a waiver from topographic survey on a portion of the parcel. Portion of the property was topographically surveyed that we're, we're building in. And, and we are supplementing that with Lightar from.
Lightar, and certainly the area that we're talking about is beyond any proposed roadways. Uh, so I would make a, make a motion to, uh, grant that waiver.
Okay, it's moved and seconded. This is for subsection C point three, point B, point two. Topographical survey, all those in favor? Okay, the vote is unanimous.
The third waiver is from section three dash three, subsection C three, B four, site-specific soils mapping. Request a waiver from having site-specific soils mapping prepared, and we're showing the, uh, NCRS soils on it.
Which sheet is that on?
That's, that actually, it's got its wetlands delineated.
Okay, I see it on, on sheet two.
Yeah, that is sheet. Sheet three of twelve.
And that's sheet two of twelve, the existing conditions, we show the soil.
Yeah. Yeah, it shows the whole, the whole thing. And then there is a, uh, larger. Like where they're proposing to stop the work now, so they're planning on stopping here, right? So that would be a waiver for all, and another portion of it's in Nottingham anyway. So it would be sheet two of twelve. Shows the overall site, the whole, the whole lot. And then sheet three of twelve. Shows, uh, more of a close-up where the existing houses. And then sheet. Six of twelve shows where the. The new lot would be. And that is actually in front of, or at least the, the entrance to the new lot is in front of the existing house.
But sheet, sheet two is the only one that shows, uh, identifies the soils.
Uh, that's what we have on there right now. We can put them on other sheets if needed, but now we're.
Just, just thinking now, we have the numbers. What the actual soil, soil itself is, rather than just the number, number referring to the soil.
Yeah, we usually do that, it's just, we miss those.
Yep.
Yeah, I just wanted to name it.
Just naming, yeah.
What that five forty-seven, that. That's, uh, wetlands, right?
Right, that's, we, we delineated the front side of that wetland, but.
Yeah, okay.
Not the backside.
And I'll, I'll make a motion to, uh, grant that request with regard to site-specific soils.
A second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of granting a waiver to subsection C point three, point B, point four. Site-specific soils mapping, all those in favor? Unanimous?
Our next waiver we requested was for the roadway cross-sections, we are going to provide the existing profile. I don't know if this is a, a partial waiver or how we. Uh, you'd like to deal with this one.
Well, you are going to, you're going to do that.
Well, well, we can, we'll show a existing profile of the existing road, so.
You're going to put a, uh, cross-section of what the gravel will be?
What it, it currently is.
Yeah, we need to know what it is and what you propose.
I'd want to hold off on that.
Yeah, so we gotta.
Okay.
But, cause you. You're going to wind up doing it, so you're going to come up with that, and then we'll go from whatever you give us.
Yep.
Okay, so the next one?
The next one is from section three dash six, subsection E three F one, test pits and percolation tests. We're requesting a waiver for performing the test, uh, due to the fact that lots are large. Uh, and we don't require state subdivision approval, and currently they're only proposing to. To build on lot one, and we'll have to do a septic design for that anyways.
And how, what, how, how many acres is lot one going to be?
Thirteen acres.
I mean, that one.
Buys, right?
Right, yeah. Okay, a motion to wait, grant the waiver on subsection E point three, point F, point one, test pit and percolation test.
I'll, I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor of granting subsection E point three, point F, point one, test pit and percolation test? Uh, unanimous.
In the last waiver we requested is section three dash six, subsection E three, F three, storm water management report. Uh, due to the fact we're not proposing to improve or, or create more impervious surface, we're not. Uh, we'd like to request a waiver from, from providing that report.
Probably hold off on that one, too.
Yeah, why don't we wait till you get your driveway profile, Scott?
Okay.
And, and, um. Plus, we want to take a look, you know, that's what the walkthroughs for, so that when we go out there, we can take a look at everything.
Yep.
So, we'll just hold off on. You're going to wind up giving us a profile, and then this one here, once we take a walkthrough, we can make a, a decision one way or the other. So.
We'll need, uh, a proposed, uh, homeowners association.
Would be like, it would be a road association, I would suggest, instead of a full-blown. Yeah.
Right.
The, the sooner you can get that, the sooner. Town council can provide some feedback.
Okay.
If you needed an example of one.
Yeah, if you would just send one over, I've got some examples, but if you got one that's been through the town here, then great.
Sunday morning?
Yeah, and, uh, and again, getting back to, uh, to lot twenty-nine. Would want to have. Want to have some type of restriction that that lot cannot have access to, to the proposed roadway. Otherwise, you, you, but, but talking, talking about an additional lot, so it'd be four, and we'd definitely be looking at a wider, wider road.
Okay, yeah, we can put a note on the plan for that.
Well. I think that's probably as far as we should go until we take a walk.
Yeah, I think so.
So. We'll be continuing this till Sunday morning. February eleventh.
And then we.
The twelfth.
Yeah.
Sorry, the twelfth.
We should have another continuance, or for.
For the, um.
Whatever, next meeting.
When do you think you? Will be able to come up with?
When's the next meeting?
The twenty-second.
I think we'll be.
And then March, March eighth. Is the next meeting, and, and with that, we're also going to have a public hearing on March eighth.
How many, uh, days before the meeting is the data required to be in to the town?
Seventeen.
Which, that meeting's only two weeks away, so we're not going to meet the one in February, it has to be March.
Plus, we've got, uh, Mister Cross coming in, so that's going to take some time.
Yeah. So. Your March meeting, the first one is the eighth, I think we have a pretty full schedule already.
On the eighth?
Yeah. Is that when Ed's scheduled to come back in, the eighth?
But he was the end of the month.
Well, there's, we asked that they come in very well on the address at the end of the month, and then on the eighth.
Oh, okay. Yeah, because we, we needed one done before we could keep going.
Right, exactly, yep. So what else we have for the, well, too late for the next meeting anyways.
I think, as far as I know.
So the eighth, we have, we're going to, we're going to have a public hearing about tree cutting.
Okay.
And Ed Cross.
Yeah.
That, that's going to pretty much chew that meeting right up.
Yeah.
So that would put you out, Scott. Till the twenty-second of March.
Okay.
Okay. And that gives you guys more time to do everything.
So data will be, uh, required in by March fifth.
Yeah.
I'll make, uh, a motion, Mister Chairman.
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we, uh. Field, uh, field check on the proposed subdivision this, this Sunday at.
Ten AM.
Ten AM. And then, uh, continuation for the, uh, for the subdivision to March twenty-second.
March twenty-second.
March twenty-second. First item on the agenda?
Yeah, seven fifteen.
Yeah.
A second. All those in favor of a continuation for a walkthrough on Sunday? I'm sorry, go ahead, Ed. Yep. Well, you can, you, if you want, they can also come to the walkthrough.
Yeah, yeah.
On Sunday.
We'd like to get public input.
Does anybody have anything to say about what we've done tonight? Okay.
All right, so, so we, they can vote that.
For continuing till Sunday and the twenty-second.
Twenty-second, yeah.
So we have a motion for the continuance for Sunday at ten AM, and then the following meeting will be on March twenty-second.
Right.
At seven fifteen. All those in favor? It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, that one we got. Don, you're going to be the first one there?
What's that?
You're going to be the first one there?
Probably.
All right. All right. Okay, continuation of a public hearing for application for excavation, map four oh four, lot three, Fort Mountain Trucking Company. Excuse me for a second, but I'm going to go get a little bit of water.
You have us electronically anyway, right?
Yes.
Whatever the board needs.
I was going to say, the, uh, we do have a, a little bit of a discrepancy between, uh, what Keach Nordstrom had, uh. Commented with regard to Dow Road, as far as the ownership was concerned, and what, uh. What the Board of Selectmen had decided on.
What the Board of Selectmen has decided on, and plus our team, too.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
The research that we did. Decide with what your discovery is.
Yeah, I think we're in, we're in concurrence on.
Yes.
On the ownership on that.
Yeah.
And, uh, I think, uh, Keach was just going back on, on some research that had been done, but, uh. We don't. We don't necessarily agree with that research.
Either way.
Okay.
We got something in common, Fred.
I spoke with Steve today. The documents that are shown on like the town site about.
Yeah.
Don't provide enough information, it very well could be.
Right. We just, just commenting to Jeff that, uh, the.
Keach's.
Board of Selectmen and, and Jeff are in agreement as to the ownership of Dow Road, that being it's a class six town road. And has not diverted, reverted to the butters.
Okay.
Well, good evening. For the record, my name is Jeff Ames, Fort Mountain Trucking Company Incorporated. Next to me is John Newman from New Hampshire Land Consultants, and then we have Michael Wright from the company called Respect. Um, we're here primarily to listen, to hear what the engineers had to say. And. Probably interact with some of the, if I can use the word discovery, that they came about with the plans that we submitted. I think the first thing that Fred and I talked about is the, uh. Status of the road, both our team and the town has, um, pretty well. Established that it is still a town-owned road. So that's taken care of. We have, and I hope the board has, uh, received, the alteration or train permit approved by the state. You've got that, Cam, right?
We have that on file, I think. The fact that we have it, the fact that.
Okay, so I guess, uh. As my grandmother used to tell me, you never learn anything with your mouth working, so I'm going to listen.
Did I clarify, is that alteration of terrain permit been approved or applied for?
Yes, and we approved, and we were copied on.
Now, do you, you receive a copy of, uh, Keach's comments?
We did.
Okay, good.
And, uh, it was right around, I think, one oh eight this afternoon, and it was like a college experience again of trying to cram everything down.
I guess we probably should give you the opportunity to take and review these, uh, rather than, uh. Lay it on you right now, I guess. I did, uh. I did go through and, and, uh, make a copy of our previous excavation permit. Obviously, not to you, but to somebody else here in town, and. Probably, uh, we've got five pages of, of, uh, requirements in here. And, uh, that, what would end up doing would be to. Obviously, make, make these requirements, uh, specific to your, your site, and, uh, some of which would, would be dropping entirely, but. This at least gives us a, uh, a. A format to, to, uh, begin with anyways, and, uh, go from there.
I think Cam has been a great guy to work with. We went through most of those requirements, and I.
Oh, he did, okay.
I think we pretty well fulfilled every requirement that has been asked.
Yeah, we, we went through those. Both as the first or the second hearing. Um, I think kind of the, the bigger thing that. I overlooked was the reclaiming, uh, the.
Restoration bonds? Restoration bonds?
Yes.
Yeah.
That ratio.
We're gonna, we probably should get a recommendation from Keach on that.
Provided some. Sort of recommendation. Again, I also got this today.
Yeah.
I believe it's number twelve on the memo.
That's slopes.
Slops. I think this could be. Kind of a miscommunication.
Yeah. Because the numbers we used on this permit, this is permit is what, two thousand sixteen, so they.
That was the last, yeah, but originally it started.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we had told. The applicant. That we would be fine with two to one.
Oh, yeah, yeah, what I'm, what I'm talking about is how much money, how much of a bond that should be. Put aside based on an acreage, acreage of open. Open land, open a land, yeah, that.
It's a restoration bond, so that if he has.
I believe we are, we discussed that and.
The way I remember it, Cam, is that typically you put it in the engineer's hands to come up with as a third party.
Northam usually would come up with that, because you're not gonna have more than five acres open at a time anyways.
No. And that would be. Paragraph or component number three. Bullet number one. Bullet number two primarily talks about a time window. And we can come up with something. And then in that paragraph, they talk about market conditions, they talk about other variables that do come about with a process like this.
Yeah, see. As an issue, I, I assume he's gonna, it's gonna be some place in the vicinity of about ten thousand bucks an acre or possibly more. That's my guess.
Used to be five.
Yeah, originally they. They had recommended ten.
Yeah.
And then we, we allowed it to go to five, but those are. Ten years.
Well, yeah. Five doesn't get you very far, not these days, unfortunately.
Well, then, yeah, I think it would be wise to.
And we'd have a problem with that even. That's something that you and I talked about and something that we kind of mentally budgeted for.
Yeah, I mean. Steve, we can. He'll be able to get that really quick. So basically, we're just waiting for Steve, he would come up with. A per acre amount for restoration. Other than that, I mean, that's probably one of the, that would be the only really major thing, right?
Yeah, yeah.
I think bullet number three talks about. Right, what you mentioned there, the conditions that the town has that we would be implied. To. You know, the approval of. The planning board.
Yeah.
Along with the alteration of terrain.
Mm hmm, yeah.
Now, the alteration to train did approve a one to one, but you guys asked us to a two to one.
Right.
Right, but you can cut the one to one and fill it back at a two door.
We can. I think the biggest concern that all of us have is going to. The next paragraph with zoning matters. And that is, they are recommending a hundred foot setback compared to the seventy five. And I think I'd like to ask Mike Wright to comment on that in the sense of what is typical and what is expected. In a regular construction site rather than.
According to the. Normal typical excavation rules, it is a seventy five foot setback for that one. He's pointing out that in zoning, there is a one hundred foot setback. So I think, you know, we wanted to be building or constructing something in there, we would comply with the one hundred foot, but. Being an excavation, that seventy five foot is more than enough, it's the standard, you know, state regulation distance and everything else.
Right. So I believe our, our regulation, our setback regulation is with regard to structures.
Yeah, it's for building.
Yeah.
Yeah, for building, yeah.
But I don't think it applies here, so it's just the excavation seventy five foot standard.
Have you, have you prepared a. I lost it. Oh, dust control plan to submit to DES.
You guys asked for that and we did put that on the original plans, or the last submitted plans to you guys.
And that would be in the permit as well.
Right.
We went over that at the last hearing.
Right. Yeah, so.
It was also added to the AOT permit.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that, that comment is in there as well.
Right, and, and we also get it in on the actual permit that the town gives you as well. So that we have something on the permit about dust control.
I think it's on the plans and then once it's approved by the planning board, well, then it's.
Ah, what did we do on the last one? Did we also put it in the permit as well?
It's in the permit, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's on the plans, your plans that you submit, and we also talk about it in the permit.
So it's a component on the permit.
Yeah. Yeah, what I can do, I can, probably should have made two copies of this to give you, if you wanted to give you an idea what we're gonna be looking for. The, just talks about no excavation below. Road level within fifty feet of any public right of way, which that's obviously not gonna be an issue for you.
Yeah, that's kind of an NA.
No, no excavation, they'll be committed within fifty feet of the boundary of any butter or within a hundred and fifty feet. Any dwelling which either existed or which building permit has been issued at the time the excavation is commenced. This can, is this existing vegetation shall be maintained. Granite shall be maintained to prevent the accumulation of freestanding water for long periods. No fuels or lubricants shall be stored onsite unless in compliance with state laws or. Or rules pertaining to such materials and reference to. Best management practices for DES puts out on this, storage of fuels and lubricating materials. Talks about if. Any, any slopes that will exceed one to one. Temporary slopes that'll exceed one to one, you're gonna have to put some type of barricade up to, to prevent people falling off with a. Falling over the cliff.
Don't worry, my wife in the insurance business will making sure that's gonna happen.
And the restoration bond. And then any, any one acre area which is depleted of commercial materials. And, and has been excavated to finish grade, shall be reclaimed. Within twelve months. Site restoration, which will be loam and seed.
Japanese knotweed.
That's an invasive. But it does grow really quick.
Yeah, it grows real quick.
You're not, you're not anticipating any ledge, yes, you're not anticipating any blasting at all.
No.
Right, so that was one other requirement that we had. Which that reminds me.
Just on the. For your benefit, do you want to address that in your permit, just in case? I know you got test bits, but.
I don't think, no, that's not a, no, I appreciate your thought.
You know, you know how things change.
I know how things change, but.
Good. Just, just looking at this, the, the previous permit, the, we were supposed to get some water sampling results.
Yes.
Which we never got.
Well, if he's not blasting, that makes a huge.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we.
But no, with the fact that Jeff is not gonna be blasting and.
That makes it.
That's not an issue.
Yeah, that's not an issue.
Dust control, identification of source of water for the dust control. Probably looking at particular monitoring as well. Hours and days of operation, we talked about that.
We talked about that, that is on the plan.
And that's on the plan too, so again, that'll be something that'll be in the permit. Containing property line, that's, we're not, we're not gonna be excavating right up to the property line, so. Any letters of deficiency issued by DES. In your operation, the excavation shall be granted suspension of this permit. So that just a, a warning that that's, that could happen if DES is, issues any. All slopes shall be left at a, final, left at a two to one. Any standing, standing water longer than seasonal would be, must be eliminated. If excavation is, is just a restatement that it's, it'll be in accordance with the plans and only in accordance with those plans. Any variation from that would be considered to be a violation on the permit. And then. Site inspections and inspection costs, we have something in there with, with Keach to be able to come out.
Yeah. But that's.
But that's.
How many times did we do that, once a year?
Yeah.
It was once a year, a review?
Yeah.
That. That's negligible.
Oh, yeah.
When Keach comes out and reviews, takes a look at what your plan and says. X is done compared to your plant, that's kind of what it is, and you're gonna be showing him what you did anyway. Because without him going out and surveying it, he's not gonna know what it is until you tell him anyway. That's usually probably a couple hour walkthrough with you guys.
Okay.
So then, then it's just a matter of putting all the items down and, and then you would sign it and then. Basically saying that by signing this, you understand all our conditions and agree to abide by them. And then the chair signs it and then we issue it. So.
Yeah, so basically Steve's gonna come up with that number and, and then you'll forward him that copy of that permit. You guys can review it. And it will all be set up for your business.
Yeah.
And then we can get this thing going. So when are you gonna sell, Sam?
I'm gonna take the fifth on that one.
There'll be a lot of people in town waiting for it, I can tell you. Go ahead, Cam.
Regarding this, it matters, I know we need to come from it, like, I believe the board will have to.
Well, no, Fred had already addressed that because our hundred foot setback is, is for structures, it's, it's not.
It, it does include excavation, that said. You know, this is an exist.
But that's a lot of record prior to two thousand and six.
It already. And the. Excavation regulations specifically say seventy five feet, I believe, and not, I believe it does, and. Planning board has the authority to waive certain requirements.
Right, but didn't on, on our, on our seventy five foot setback. Is applicable for lots that were created prior to the hundred foot setback regulation in, from two thousand and six.
Yeah, they would, basically it's applies to newly created lots.
The hundred does.
Hundred does, yeah.
The lot that they have was prior to the, the two thousand and six, so they, they still should be held to the seventy five.
Yeah, that's. I think that's what.
If he were creating new lots.
Oh, yeah.
Then it would, it would jump to the hundred.
Right.
So the, the seventy five is because your lot was created prior to the two thousand and six increase to a hundred foot.
Yeah, it, it's.
Long as we. I think we should note that in, in the permit, so it's public record.
Yeah. Yeah, because this was, this was adopted in two thousand twenty, a hundred foot.
Well, that was, that went towards the bernal pools initially.
Well, that, that covers the hundred feet.
Yeah.
And. Because then we, for lots, and this is under two ten point eight general provisions. For lots in existence prior to March fourteen, two thousand and six, no septic tank, or less septic tank. Just, we're referencing. In septic tanks.
Think what would be, be done, the board would. At point three to allow. This permit to utilize the seventy five foot setback as specified.
So when we passed that in two thousand and six, we alleviated the existing lot. From seventy five to a hundred.
No, it, it definitely refers to the seventy five feet for anything in existence.
Prior to two thousand and six.
Yeah.
So the seventy five set, foot setback applies to lots as long as they're not creating a new lot out of that lot.
Right.
To the seventy five foot. Because I remember we were going over this, that the biggest issue there was that we were trying to debate. The, the bernal pool issue, the size of the wetlands in order to get the hundred foot setback.
Right. Yeah, so. I think there's, there's certainly enough here in the regulations to be able to take and, and say that this would apply.
Right.
Apply to this.
Specifically since we're not re-adding a new lot.
Right.
And they're not constructing buildings.
I think, I think the magical thing here is that the lot is in pre, exists, existed prior to two thousand and six. March fourteen, two thousand and six, so. This, everything on the seventy five feet would apply to this lot.
Yeah.
Because that's, that's what my read is.
Yes, that, that's the way I interpreted it too. So. Steve Keach needs to review to come up with a bond number.
Yep.
You're gonna get a copy of the Deerfield permit.
Yeah.
You guys can look at it. We'll have a number from Keach. Get the pit agreement squared away, then we can sign it. After we get the pit agreement squared away.
Right, right.
So we're gonna need to come one more time?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I think so.
Well, because you, did you see? Jim Raines comments on the.
No. I, I was.
You wanna reading through.
Ultimately, it's a perfectly binding agreement. There's one thing, he says that the criminal could not correctly address reclamation obligations. Section one point E requires Fort Mountain to comply with the conditions for town permit. But whether that obligation extends to reclamation is unclear, Eves and Fort Mountain may wish to clarify whether we now for them have that obligation. In the event, though, the owner holds the rec, reclamation obligation under our setting. Cannot contract in ways that excavate it. The board should therefore require that the reclamation bond be issued showing the owner has the. Obligoried not for mountain, how Eves and Fort Mountain allocate that responsibility between them.
Yeah, well, the, the, the bond's gonna be for the owner.
Right.
So just not the contractor.
And that would, and that would be covered in the, in the permit itself.
Right, yeah, so the owner's the one that will be putting the bond up for the land, not the contractor.
Because what I could do, Jeff, I can give you this copy and I'll, I'll email you a copy of this.
Yeah.
So that you have it to, and to be able to look at to start. So that you have it to uh and to be able to look at just starting putting it together.
Yeah.
And Cam, if you could send me your uh letter from your legal counsel, which I assume Jim is, right?
Do you want this letter right here?
Sure. If you could send it to me electronically, that way I can transfer it over to our legal counsel and then from there, everybody's singing.
And this is a copy of. Excavation permit. We have another one, but yours will be a little bit different than that one because it's gonna be site specific.
And again, that had requirements in there would be.
You guys wanna white out some names on here? Is that okay with you?
You can go get it and read it yourself. It's not a big deal.
But yeah, again, he had specific requirements that were applicable to his site, which won't be applicable to your site. So but that's just to give you an idea of what what would be in the permit itself.
So this is a boilerplate.
Well, it's site specific for him and yours will be similar to that, but site specific to you.
And who's gonna who's gonna draft this? Who's gonna write it? You guys are.
We'll I'll probably work with Steve on that.
Yeah.
Yeah, cuz.
So what we'll do is we'll take the information from your plans. Kind of everything we talked about that. We'll make sure. And you'll have an opportunity to. We push it to you to sign.
So basically, the permit is gonna be what your plans are. What you're telling us you're gonna do. And and the permit that we give you is gonna say that you said you're gonna do this and we're gonna check to make sure that you do what you say you're gonna do. That's.
Right, so the information we've already submitted will be included into that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Right.
So it's it's not something we're just whipping up. It's basically your plans that have been approved. We're gonna say, okay, this is the permit, your plans. As long as they jive, everything's fine.
Okay.
And if. I'm not saying you're not gonna follow your plans because.
I understand where you're coming from.
Following your plans, then then you're talking to us and you don't want to talk to us anyway. So we have those things to resolve and then we can get you one step closer.
So we could. Yeah, we're running into the same same issues we had with the previous applicant. Yeah, we're probably looking at March twenty second. Hopefully, at that point, we'd be able to have uh the permit all prepared and. And uh you'd be able to you to take a look at it prior to the meeting, so it's just a matter of. Finally approval approval of the plans and signing the permit.
Right, so that's. And that that puts us out to the twenty second.
Yeah.
So it would be March twenty second.
Okay.
Yeah, everything from Keach, everything you guys need to get, we get it all on paper. And we can. Get this thing going for you.
Well, we appreciate that. At the same time, there uh. March twenty second would work. It'd be fairly a short meeting anyways, right? Because everything's gonna be.
Hopefully, everything will be.
Yeah.
Everything will be introduced and everyone will be happy and.
Right.
Okay. Three twenty two.
Well, I'll make a motion to uh for continuation continuation to uh March twenty second, second item, second item on the agenda.
Can you a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, oh.
Any comments?
I'm sorry.
Anybody on here?
Seconded by Bill. All those in favor of a continuation till March twenty second for Fort Mountain and Eames, Jeff Eames?
Alright.
I it's unanimous. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, guys. Phil, I like your T-shirt. No longer.
Okay. Yes, when the permit, uh Cam, what we'll have to do is make reference to that section of the of the ordinance of calls for. Also the hundred foot setback and say that because of the fact that this is a lot that was in existence of in two thousand and six. That the hundred foot setback does not apply and it would be seventy five foot setback with the uh requirement.
Okay, so we have a conceptual meeting for Sandra Farren of, which is map four oh six lot twenty four. Number three, Old Coffee Town Road, Deerfield, New Hampshire. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Luanne Smith and this is Sandra Farren. She's asked me to do some talking for her because she gets nervous.
Okay, we're not gonna bite.
Um so she would like to turn her property into a context. It's a legal two family right now. And um we called and they said, let's have a conceptual meeting. From when we talked, I forget who I spoke with, they said.
To Kevin, the building inspector.
Okay, Kevin, he said it looks pretty good, but he recommended we have this meeting anyway, just to make sure everybody's on board with it. So I did write down some facts um about her property and if I could just go over them with you, I'd appreciate it. Okay, um so her address is three Coffee Town Road in Deerfield. Old Coffee Town Road, I'm sorry. And she wants to convert, there's two single family homes on her property. And she wants to convert it to a context. The property is currently a one single home and one modular home on a per- on a permanent slab. The single family home consists of two slash three bedrooms and a bath. Built in nineteen eighty with a property address of three old Coffee Town Road. The manufactured home, it consists of two slash three bedrooms and two baths, which was built in twenty ten. I don't know when the garage was built, um but there's a big two car garage on that end of it. And that property has a address of twenty three Blake's Hill Road. And that's for the purpose of nine one one in USPS. The total land between the two properties is two point three three two acres. The only item that is shared on the property is the well. There are two septic systems. Two different electrics, separate heating systems, everything is separate. And the two units, the two houses are pretty far from each other. Each unit has its own driveway and entrance to the home. Each will enter from their own street address. Which will be two separate addresses. On September twenty six twenty two, six North Road, Unit A in Deerfield, which also is a condex, was sold. The property has a total of a half an acre and is two point six miles from three old Coffee Town Road. Uh Sandy will give the con- condex a name and have condo documents completed by an attorney and approved. By whomever needs to approve the condo association. I do believe all all the qualifications to meet the conversion of the property to make it a legal context. Thank you for giving her the time and the opportunity um to ask for this. And on the back of your paper. We've been talking to a surveyor. It's promised land survey in Derry, New Hampshire. They would be the ones doing the separation of the two parcels to comply with all the regulations to meet the condex conversion. And we've been talking to attorney J L Sweeney of Nashua. He would do all the legal documents to comply to do. To do the regulations to meet the condex conversion.
So Kevin called me on this.
Mm-hmm.
Um a few weeks ago. And um. I said that he needed to come before us so we could straight figure this out.
Which lot is it, uh Cam?
Um it's this highlighted one right here.
Twenty three.
Twenty three.
Okay, yeah, it's twenty three and the number, okay.
So. Just looking at the uh the manufacturing home, which was built in two thousand and ten. Was there a building permit for that?
Cindy bought the home. When did you buy it?
January twenty eighth of twenty two.
I'm just wondering if there's.
I believe there was a permit because they were they were there when she bought it.
Yeah, but I think the issue here would, at least in my mind, is that. The uh should have gone to the ZBA to put a second house on there. And uh and if they built a lot of building permit. That's a potential issue.
When she bought the home, um it was listed as a legal two family. The listing sheet, I don't know.
Yeah, that's.
But I know that doesn't mean anything, right? But that's how she bought it.
Right. Because I think what would probably end up having to do would be to have the building inspector take a look and see. If that in fact you did get a building permit and if not, I don't know if you turn around and. Charge you for a building permit for a house that's been there and uh but never should have been, but uh.
It's a very nice modular home, has two bathrooms, three bedrooms.
That what Fred's concern is 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 that. Is how how it got there and and whether or not the building inspector at the time approved. That.
Oh.
That that's basically.
Yeah, yeah.
How did how did that permit happen is.
Right, because you only have two point three acres and if you have a second dwelling on the property, at that point, you should have had six acres.
How many square feet is the second building?
I actually. I actually have a a layout, right?
Okay, I think this is the Anthony De Miles property.
It's. It's right across with Paul Smith's pit.
Pretty much, yeah.
I'm wondering if that it wasn't. If it wasn't a legal lot, how could they get? How could it pass through the like the title search for a mortgage?
It wouldn't. It would just do it. It would have just put it in there and not said anything to anybody. It's not a very highly traveled road, other than the people that live out there. So unfortunately, they could put it out there and get it out, just not saying anything to anybody. But and that may be why they have a shared well.
But is there a mortgage?
Yeah, she has a mortgage on.
Yeah, there's a mortgage with.
Why would the bank give a mortgage on a property that didn't have a clear price?
Well, usually they have a title search on things where that happens, so.
Why wouldn't it have a clear title though? The property could have had a clear title if you put something else on that property. It doesn't affect the title any.
Yeah, right.
But the lot wasn't.
The bank doesn't care if that was, you just put another building on the property, that's all you did. You didn't affect the title of it at all. You just put another building on the property.
Yeah.
Was this just curiosity? Was it was this the Anthony De Miles property? You know?
I bought it from, his name was Andrew. Andrew.
That was nephew or something, I think.
Andrew Howell. Yes, Andrew Howell.
So you're the owner of the entire property with the two parcels?
Yes.
And a two car garage.
Was it two parcels or?
Or I mean.
One two structures.
It's one parcel with two buildings.
Right.
Two structures with two different addresses. Two different driveways.
And two different tax bills.
It all in one, I pay, I don't know. I I guess it's one because it's my mortgage tax and insurance are all included in the mortgage.
Being necessary to go to the ZBA to get a variance for the two.
Yeah.
That's make it legal.
Yeah. That's probably the best way to do that. Get it be because obviously uh we don't, it doesn't need to go the other way. So we need to see if there was.
Yeah.
So we need to see if there was a building permit pulled back in two thousand and ten.
If a permit was granted, then even though it didn't meet the requirements, it's it's too late.
It's too late. But at this point, we're kind of too late. We need the zoning board to bless this.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
There wasn't a building.
If there wasn't a building.
If there wasn't a building permit.
Right.
Real Coffee Town Road might have it on there.
Excellent, but.
Right there, yeah. Eight twenty five eleven, thank you. I scanned right over that. It's right, but you can't not see that.
I do have the card because I'm blind. They have it there too. They have it right here.
Eight twenty five eleven. Install new home on site.
Yeah.
That's when they they picked it up. The assessor.
Right, that's when the assessors picked it up. It doesn't actually mean that's when there was a permit.
Right, exactly.
Drawn. So that the assessors went out to look at home A and notices home B on the property. That's when they noticed it, so that's when they would start assessing the value at it.
Right.
It doesn't necessarily mean.
Actually got a permit.
Correct.
It says it, but again, that many things.
We don't know. I think we need to ask the assessing department. You can verify for us.
Yeah.
Before we make it. You know, a decision.
Yeah.
And we had the breakdown of the two properties too.
So what you what what it says here, it says um. The single family home was built in nineteen eighty. And then it says manufactured home consists of two slash three bedrooms and two baths comma. With a two car garage detached built in two thousand and ten, so.
Excuse me, the the garage, I should have did it a different direction. The garage is old.
Okay, so that's what I was just coming.
The garage is old.
There prior to this.
Yeah, the garage, oh, you can tell the garage is old, yes.
So.
It's the house that was.
So the house was.
Or put on there.
Is the building itself was constructed, like it's manufactured.
It's a modular home.
Manufactured in two thousand and ten?
Yes.
And then it was put on the site in two thousand and eleven? So, because if you read this, you would think, you understand what I'm saying?
I do. I don't know when it was.
Could have been built in two thousand and ten. But it didn't get put on that site until August of two thousand and eleven. And 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 that's just something we need to find out whether or not a permit was issued to put that on there in August of two thousand and eleven.
Right.
August two thousand. And we would go to. The zoning board to ask?
The first thing we need to find out is whether or not there was a permit issued. If there was not a permit issued, then you would need to go to the zoning board.
And if a permit was issued. Im improperly, but nonetheless issued, then you're basically your your home free.
Okay.
Building inspector should have picked up on that and he didn't.
It's all if they did get a permit. Um is this something that we should be doing or?
The easiest thing would be to do. I I don't remember if Kevin told me he couldn't find a permit. Because we did discuss this. He called me up to ask me about this. He had said what you were trying to do.
Right.
And I said, well. I said, we need to, we need to talk about this and I guess you could call Kevin back. Um he will be in tomorrow.
Okay.
And see if he has a record of a building permit coming out in August.
Twenty eleven.
Twenty eleven or two thousand and ten. Okay.
Yep. What if he can't find it?
That means there wasn't one.
Oh.
Then what happened?
Then you have to go to the zoning board. Now.
And you might have to pan after the fact to.
You have.
Building permit.
You have to buy a pill building permit.
Okay.
I I anticipate I anticipate the ZBA would end up. Blessing it because it's.
Does this have its own separate power hookup?
Yes.
Yep.
Now, so I shared well, but one, it's got a separate power, separate septics, but a shared well.
Separate separate heat, separate everything.
So don't they have to have a stamp on the effort building inspector before they hook up? Generally, like if I. Generally, like if I want to get a panel hooked up by P S and H.
Depends on if we had an electrical inspector back in that time.
We did, yeah, Rick.
Rick. Was also the building inspector.
Right.
So if he didn't do the building permit, he wouldn't have done the electrical.
Right, right.
So therefore, if if the power company, whether it be co-op or ever source or public service back in the day.
And that wasn't that long ago.
It would, yeah, correct, so it all depends. Um, if they didn't have it and it was deemed as that one parcel. Then they wouldn't have needed.
Oh, it would have been, it's like it just an extra.
An extra, just like hooking up the barn, you're just gonna, all you're gonna do is draw a permit to put power to that dwelling.
Right.
They don't care.
Different.
That, yeah, they, again, they don't care. It's the same thing as anything else. They don't care if you have a permit for the house. The house is there. You must have one.
Yeah.
Well, I get three separate light bills.
Yeah, no, yeah, no.
Oh, yeah, no, that's fine.
We were trying to establish.
I'm just trying to figure out whether or not the building inspector would have looked at the potential if. Like, if you're building a new house before you can get power hooked up, the building inspector has to approve the panel before the power company will hook up to it.
Hmm.
And if that was done. There's a potential that there is a building permit back there.
Yeah, fine.
When when you bought it last year, um, there was the people renting the modular home also ran a small business out of that garage. On a small engine.
That. That probably.
It's irrelevant, too, unfortunately.
Okay, and and on her tax, her taxes that she gets. I mean, if.
Do you have like two tax bills?
I have one.
No, but like, is it broken down into?
Does it have two street?
So usually they have land and buildings.
Oh, yeah.
Didn't look at.
Okay. You just pay it.
Yeah, well, especially where it has two addresses.
Smaller. Should have brought the whole bracket.
That's when you make that smaller, like before you could see both pieces.
I have a picture of it on my phone where it does.
Right, so what they're doing is they're billing for the, they're taxing for the house. But they're taxing the other house for the land.
Land, yeah.
No different than if you build a garage, you're gonna tax you for your garage, your chicken coop, your barn, whatever. They're just taxing that.
Tubes.
They're taxing that home, but they're not, that's why you don't receive two. If that was, if that was a house.
Yeah, but you would, but the way the town would, the way the town would bring it up, like what Dawn was just saying is. It would be two separate parcels.
Can I just, um, on this sheet that I have her tax card, I'm just reading it. Um, right here, and it says permits. Did you see that? And it said mobile home twenty eleven?
But we're still trying to figure out whether or not the permit actually was.
Oh, or if they just found it.
And you want to see if there, you've got two homes and one piece of land per se. So you want to see if the the mobile home has a. A lot of land that's being built with that home? Or is the land being built with the original home? So if the original home, the the wood structure is being built for the two point. Some odd acres. And then you're being billed for the trailer, for the mobile home. So if that was the case, and that means that the, just the main home takes care of the land and the home, whereas the mobile home is only the mobile home.
Okay.
So you're only getting billed for that, no different than if you, like I was saying before, if you built a barn or a shed, you'd be taxed on that structure.
Okay.
I don't think they broke it up.
Wow.
It's one piece of land.
Yeah.
One piece of land.
Picture of the aerial view, there should be one.
I I do.
Oh, okay, because then you can see like the.
Quite a distance between the two of them.
Oh, yeah, that that's not even the issue.
It's if it was built for with a permit, right?
There's a permit.
Yeah.
That's good for you guys. If it's not a permit, it's not good for you, which means you have to go to the zoning board and tell them what you have. And they have to grant you a waiver of the regulations. For your. The hardship that you have is it's already all built in there.
Yeah.
Okay, that's that's what it is, okay?
Yeah, and it was there when she bought it.
This is, this is review after the fact. That's that's where we're at.
Right. It's really strange.
So if they, if if she gets worst case scenario, she has to go through that process, she comes back here and gives it to you.
Once she gets a variant, she wouldn't need to come to us, would she? Uh, oh, we would still have to grant the condex.
Yeah, we'd, and I guess from a condex standpoint, it would be, what, the? Both, both prop, both houses would. Own the two point three acres jointly?
So it'd have to be like a condo association.
Yeah, right.
Well, well, one house would own a portion of the land. And the other house would own it, but it would all be one, yeah, it would be one.
That you wouldn't get.
Subdivision.
Yes, you don't, you won't get a subdivision to get one.
No, it's not a subdivision. It's it's gonna be a shared land.
Right, no, but what I'm trying to say is. It can't be one house owning one and the other owning another, because that's a subdivision.
Okay.
What it is, is the way they're laid out, they're so far apart.
I know.
You already have your land that.
Right, but the the way the rules are, we can't subdivide a two acre lot to make two one acre lots, okay?
Right.
The only thing that you could get a zoning variance for would be to get. A condo association.
Yes.
Okay? The houses could sell independently. But it would be an association for that one particular piece of land. Because. We have a three acre minimum for one lot. We can't take the two acre lot and make two one acre lots. Because the, the zoning for the three acre lots happened back in the seventies.
Oh, yeah.
So we can't. We can't go back prior to something like that. So the only thing that you can apply for from the zoning board. Would be to get a variance to turn that into a condo association. That's what you're, that's what you'd be looking for, unless there's a building permit back there. And then. That's still an issue with the the lots.
Right.
Okay, would still have to be a condo.
Yeah, right.
So you.
Yeah, it would be, it would be a context.
It's gonna be a condo no matter how you look at it, because you can't make one acre lots.
Yeah, because the property that that just sold on um, North Road had a half an acre. It was a context.
Right, but that was a preexisting lot.
Okay.
Okay, so that lot was a lot of record prior to the three acre zoning.
I got, I have.
Okay, so that's why that was sold like that, okay? Go ahead, Ed. On that half acre lot?
Oh, on North. Oh, on the same footprint.
Okay.
Road, I don't think in my house.
If that was there, that's all different.
Yeah, that was.
Yeah, because I would say the house looks pretty new.
Yeah, that's because they're rebuilding.
Yeah.
They they rebuilt.
But like, we can't grant a subdivision on this.
No, it would be a context.
So it's.
Absolutely.
So basically, you're gonna have a condo association, is what it's gonna be. You'll have to have a set of rules and and a condo agreement and a maintenance agreement. And that's what you will have to get, but the variance, you'll have to, if there's no permit.
Mm hmm.
Okay? If there's a permit, then you come back to us.
Right.
And then you'll have to come up with a condo association and a condo condominium agreement. And a. Driveway maintenance agreement. So tomorrow, call Kevin.
Okay.
And see if he can find a building permit. And then, if you don't find a building permit, he'll have to deny you. Yeah, he'll have to write you a denial letter.
Okay.
And then you go to the Z B A. And you ask. So you explain your situation.
Mm hmm.
And then they have to. Move forward and. I'm not gonna tell you what they're gonna say, because I don't know.
Okay.
But.
So we don't really need any surveyor then, because we're not doing anything with any portion of the land.
No.
No, you're not sub, you're not subdivided.
Oh, okay, so the surveyor goes away, and we already have an attorney that's gonna do that.
He he would be the one that would draw up your your.
Condo job.
Condo documents.
And do they go to the state or do they go here after they do, right here? Okay.
Yeah, they would come here, and then our attorney reviews them.
Mm hmm. Okay.
Anything else?
Yeah, I'm just, so your intent would end up being. Uh, to be able to have two separate owners of the of the buildings.
Yes.
Because I'm just looking at the accessory dwelling unit.
No, I, well, I measured it, it's twelve hundred square feet. What's the square footage of the first, the primary building?
I think it's it's all on here.
Oh, no, it'd have to be like four thousand. To see what it is, is thirty five percent of the of the main dwelling.
Mm hmm.
Be an an additional accessory dwelling unit. So if you had like a four thousand square foot house, the twelve hundred and seventy five square feet that the. The um, the manufactured housing would be the accessory dwelling unit, but. That still doesn't work because it has to be sold if they want to keep it separate.
Oh, yeah, right.
So.
Right.
It wouldn't matter.
Yeah.
Right, so it would be a, it would be a context, not an A D U.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, because. Because you want to be able to sell it, but you'll have to have. An agreement, and then our attorney has to approve it. Ed?
I'm just, I'm asking because I'm not sure, I'm not so sure, but. When did Deerfield stop permitting mobile homes? To be put on lots? Do you have a date?
Never have.
Never.
No.
Right.
And it's a manufactured also.
Yeah, that's a mobile.
It's like a duplex, right?
But it's a duplex, right? I mean, it it's two piece or one? Because it's twenty seven feet wide.
It's like a double Y.
It's a double, right.
A double Y, yeah.
Wide on a slab.
Yeah, okay.
It's permanently attached.
And I'm only asking that they may need to.
Right there, it's a double Y.
Um, is there a, is there something against having two separate systems on one lot?
None of the state approved it.
I didn't know if the town had any of that in regulations.
No.
I had more curiosity about two dwellings sharing one well.
Yeah, that uh, the condex.
I think that's pretty common with condenses.
I didn't think, again, that would be. How could they get a permit for that?
Yeah, right.
Again.
Right, yeah.
So. That's, I mean, I don't. I still keep leaning back, I don't think there's a permit in place, only because you're not allowed, in the state in Hampshire, you're not allowed to share a well.
Babies in at night.
I can't have this piece of property and this piece of property and hook two houses into one well. That's cross contamination.
But well, but if you have a side by side duplex, they share wells.
Yeah, no, the well thing right now is not the problem, you know, the thing that you need to is, like I said, talk to Kevin tomorrow.
Okay.
And if he finds you a building permit, then you can. You can start working on getting a condo agreement.
Okay.
Okay?
Yes.
That's what we're gonna need so that we can send it to our town attorney.
Right.
He can review it.
Okay.
And then if there's any comments, he tell, would tell us, and we would, you know, you guys would have to make the necessary changes. Um, when you.
Need to come back. Applying before they submit us their first draft of the agreement.
Yeah, they actually have to apply for a public hearing, right? Because this is just conceptual.
Yeah, right.
So they would have to get, find out what's, first of all, the first thing is to talk to Kevin.
I was gonna say, he said we didn't need a hearing, we just had to make sure that you were all okay with everything.
Well, we can't just say we're okay with it, that's the problem.
Because of the permit, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Hearing, but we definitely have to put you on the agenda.
Right, okay. And the attorney, um. Uh, J L Sweeney, I guess he does quite a bit of these, so I think he'll know just what to do.
Yeah.
When you do the, you're going to have to notify the neighbors and set a date where they can.
Yeah, if you have to, if you go to the Z B A, then it'll be a notification, yeah.
Yeah. So, and you'll get that information after you talk to Kevin, because if you come in, actually come on in and see Kevin tomorrow morning, that's the best way to do it.
Okay.
And um.
We'll be here.
Bring that card with you, because that will stop him from having to look for that, and then, you know, he can go to the file cabinets.
Yes.
And our extent extensive micro fee situation where he will whip that off the computer in a heartbeat, right?
Yes.
So it's gonna take him a little while to find, potentially get you an answer. I don't think it.
I'll call him in the morning.
I don't, yeah, you can give him a call, but I mean.
That's better.
It's potentially take some time for him to look through everything to find it.
Okay.
And um. So it's gonna take you a little while.
Okay.
All right?
Thank you.
Do you need to call or come down here first?
You can do both. I'd be calling as I walk through the door.
I needed some information on a house that I bought about.
So.
Whatever. Right, Paul, this is, this is kind of new ground for us.
And well.
Came down two days later.
I don't want to see somebody get courage.
Yeah, he was like.
I mean, obviously.
Then he has time to.
Something to buy. Or for it, or I mean, or Rick.
Right.
Yeah, thank you.
Since you're booking up fast, should we, uh, should we kind of set a date here to come back or? Do you think we don't?
Excuse me?
Since you're booking up so fast, do you think we should set a date to come back or?
You gotta find out. Where you're headed first, whether it's here or to the Z B A.
Okay.
So you you won't find that out until Kevin researches whether or not there was a building permit.
Okay.
Once you find that out. Then you could actually contact us.
Yeah.
That, there's a lady that I've been talking to.
Uh, Chris?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you so much.
Um, your phone number or something, how would I get in touch with you?
Hope you can say. But the. The woman that was still holding the bond on.
Right now.
Oh, Linda? Linda.
Zorak.
Yes. It was half an acre. And it was only going to be for commercial, commercials.
Yeah, but they're living, you know.
And Rick issued him a building permit.
Mm hmm.
What are you? What are you doing?
Continuing this saga?
Well, it's, this is where Rick messed up. Yeah, yeah, he wasn't, he wasn't doing things he was supposed to do.
Didn't have three acres.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Have a good night.
You too.
I did. That's why I was saying what I was saying.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't believe there was. It just doesn't seem the right setup.
Oh, okay. Um, we have a manifest. It is, uh, Southern Hampshire Planning Circuit Rider Services and Plan Review Services. For a total of two thousand one hundred ninety six dollars and fifty nine cents. So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Also, we don't have the final word yet, but I. I anticipate that we'll get the.
Oh.
Um, it will be twenty five thousand dollars and then. We'll be working on the phase two and three applications, so.
Good.
Now that covers our meeting in Key West to discuss.
Well. We really want to be warm. Harold, you'll fly, be the tour guide. Good, okay, great. Excellent. Good thing we applied.
Yeah, for sure, well, Southern Hampshire.
Well, I mean, you know, yeah. You don't throw your hat in.
Well, right.
You don't get it.
Right, exactly. Can we end up combining that with the master plan?
It is, it, with the way I wrote it. Is that it's a, it's a physical and partial master plan update where we can also hit on other chapters, but. Because of the grant parameters, everything has to relate to housing.
Okay.
But you know, we can update goals that are related to housing, but that reach on other subjects.
Everything pretty much goes around housing right here.
Twenty thousand dollars that we've encumbered.
In the twenty five.
Yeah.
So we're at forty five.
Yeah. It should be good.